Once again, good afternoon, everyone. It is 5:00 and we are calling this council meeting to order. I will ask Mr. Edmund Jones to do the invocation and Mayor Protem Gonzalez will be doing the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
As we bring in all wonding minds and meditate on the goodness and gracious of how good we have been blessed to be in a favorable city and enjoy all the peace and happiness. Let's just relax and first I would ask that we just take a moment for a silence for our fallen comrades and those standing in arms of danger as we stand here and enjoy life. Amen. Now may the blessing of heaven rest on us. We thank you heavenly Father for the opportunity to come together and fellowship one with another. We ask you, oh God, that you would come and lead and direct this meeting in the way that you would have it to go. We ask you heavenly Father, touch each and every one within the sound of my voice. Oh God, give them honorable and willing mind, noble and respectful God. Realize that we cannot do anything without your blessing. We ask you Father to walk up and down these halls that peace, love, and harmony will prevail. We want to thank you, Father God, for stills anything we ask your name you granted to us. And we come claiming right now in your mighty name for your goodness, your mercy, for your mercy that you would touch us, Father. We realize someone's in hospital right now. Touch their bodies. There was someone didn't wake up this morning. May they rest in peace. Oh heavenly Father, we ask you to continue to keep us, keep this council, God. Give them the wisdom to do the things that they would do not on their own, but they would do it according to your goodness and your blessing. And when we've done all that you assigned us to do, we ask you to give us a home somewhere in your kingdom where we may praise your name forevermore. Please, oh bless your actual and righteous name. Amen. Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Jones and Mayor Protem Gonzalez. Let the record show that all council members are present. Please click if you would like to speak or to vote. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Adams?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda.
Councilmember Board?
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary. Presentations. Thank you all for attending tonight's council, today's council meeting. I am indeed honored to stand before you as we get ready to present the Starr Award. The individual that is receiving the Starr Award is a pillar in our community. He is a faithful servant and he attend our council meetings in support on what's going on, the agenda, and also our staff and our council. And that individual is Mr. Don Smith. Would you please join us? Give him a round of applause. Mr. Don Smith was nominated by Councilmember Solomon and he will read a little quick bio or a quick, he will say things on him in reference to why he is so deserving of this Starr Award. Councilman Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am so honored to do this, to this honorable man, Mr. Smith. Donald Smith is a retired lieutenant colonel who joined the Army in 1960 at the age of 17. After a few years of active duty and enlisted in the reserves, Don then attended college and became an officer in 1967 deploying to Vietnam that same year. After he retired in 1992, Don became an instructor, coach at Fort Polk, Louisiana for 21 years, teaching leadership, management, staff planning, and tactics. During the last 40 years, Don has been involved in church activities, supporting his wife and his cousin with their mission work in the U.S. and overseas. His goal is to try and try to help the city council. He worked in a soup kitchen for two years to learn more about the homeless and unsheltered problem in our city. He helps with his in-laws, in-law's church downtown, Colleen, as well, and he's got a better understanding of challenges that the city faces downtown. He currently, he's currently a board member for the First Assembly of God Church and assists the church with instructions and other work, again, still teaching and helping where he sees a problem. Overall, Don's goal is simply to stay active in the city events and help whenever he is asked to enable.
Wow. A lot of times after you retire, you don't get to attend things like this, so I really appreciate it. But really, I want this award to be for all the veterans sitting behind me and out in the audience, because I think we bring a different perspective to a lot of problems, especially if you're serving in a leadership position as a young, usually much younger than in many civilian jobs. And the decisions you make, especially in combat, you're like the quarterback. When somebody hikes you the ball, you got to do something. And it's real easy to look the next day and see, well, I wish I'd done this, or I wish I'd done that, but that's history. And I think as citizens, we have to remember that the city council has to make decisions and they have to drive on and they need our support. Do we agree with everything? No, of course not, but we've got to approach the problems in a professional way. Thank you very much and God bless all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
an award to Mr. Don Smith, which is so deserving of him. We will now go into citizen comments. You have four minutes to speak and please stay on the agenda. Melissa Brown.
I want to express my support for RS 24-089, which is finishing sidewalks and walking trails in four of our city parks. It's been a long time coming. This was something back in 2021, the council passed as part of our ARPA budget, and I'm excited to see this finally coming to fruition. In particular, the sidewalks are needed at Long Branch Park, but I'm confused about why it says that it is for the final design of these sidewalks and trails, because the trail at Condor is largely already dug out and leveled. They've been working on that consistently. And then also over at Stewart Park, where in 2021, '22, it was already prepped to have some sort of finish over the walking trail. So I think there may be an opportunity for us to save a little bit of money there. As far as the electric charging station, while I understand the desire to put it on a city facility because it saves us money and there is no need to do RFPs or RFQs, I don't know that the convention center makes the most sense. It's not directly off the highway. It's someplace people have to travel to. And the only reason people go there is if there is an event there. There's not really much around it within walking distance for people to just plug in their car and then go do anything. So my suggestion, if we wanted to use a city facility, would be Lions Club, which makes more sense. We've got the rec center, the senior center, the playgrounds, the aquatic center, and the baseball fields. So there's plenty of things to do while people are there. And I think that that's an area where the, where I see a lot of those vehicles anyway. If we can't get it at a city facility where there's going to be people that spend significant time there, then my suggestion would be more the mall or movie theater rather than Walmart. The movie theater or the mall, people are inside for an extended length of time, usually at least 30 minutes, or if you're at the movie theater, at least 90 minutes, which gives sufficient time to charge a vehicle and helps increase that revenue that the city would get from charging. And then in closing, I would just like to say that, or I'm sorry, also, I have a question on the municipal court briefing. From what it looks like, we have about a 30% show rate for defendants that are actually scheduled to appear. So the question is, are we only getting that 30% show rate because we have so many people just not appearing in court? Or are they getting assigned to the docket and then getting service at the clerk's desk afterwards? And then finally, I am in support of all three of your zoning requests tonight. I think they all make sense. I think they're all appropriate. I am just curious as to why the Tremere Road one. It was emphasized that the tiny homes are short-term, are HUD approved when they're supposed to be short-term rental. I don't know why that is relevant, so I would just ask the council ensure it will only be used for the stated purpose and not short-term transitional housing or any other HUD housing, because I think that would definitely affect the opinion of the local property owners. But overall, I am excited to see this project in particular come to fruition as something that I have been talking about, looking for, asking for, for many years. Thank you very much.
Anka Nago. You have four minutes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council. This is regarding the municipal court briefing. I was contacted recently by someone in Colleen. They were served with a seizure warrant for their dogs and they asked me for help and advice. And I also spoke briefly with the chief about this. Just so you know, a little background, the owner, one of the owners is active military and the other one is veteran, war veteran. So, you know, being threatened with arrest was very disruptive to them and they were not given any proof of any wrongdoing, but they were, they were afraid they're going to be arrested, so they gave up their dogs. Eventually, with, I guess with some advice, they were able to get their dogs back. But my point is that they were, their lives were disrupted for, and no reason was given, no proof was given. And even shelter staff agreed that this was hearsay. And the question is, how do they obtain, what is the process to obtain the judge's signature on a piece of paper? From what the city manager said in the past, the judges handed over a stack of papers and the judge signs the papers. If it is that easy, then it just seems like it's too easy to get somebody arrested just based on hearsay. That's one question I have. And a second one, they were threatened with arrest by animal control, not, not by the police. The police were present, but they were threatened with arrest by animal control. The question is, how does an animal control officer arrest a resident? Do they tell the police officer, arrest this person, and the police officer complies and arrests them? So it's a little bit confusing. I'm just curious what the process is for animal control to arrest someone. The dogs were returned eventually. They're still conditioned. They had to spend thousands of dollars to meet certain conditions. Again, no proof was given. They're returned to their home and they're sick. They came back from the shelter, sick. So I think they deserve an answer. Again, the wife is active duty. He's a veteran of war. I think they deserve a little bit more respect. Thank you.
Ms. Anka, I have some questions for you. So the individual that you're speaking on behalf, did they file a complaint?
Right now, they're looking to leave Colleen.
But had, did they file a complaint?
I mean, what are they going to do? Nobody's going to listen. They know that.
And my second question?
But yeah, I'll tell them. I appreciate you asking. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Yes, ma'am, because you're bringing something to us. We don't know who, what, when, where. We don't know what officers was there. We don't know what animal control person was there.
I understand.
So I just don't want you to leave here just coming to speak on behalf of someone and we don't get the full story so that Mr. Cagle and staff can look into it.
I understand.
Because if someone's coming out for thousands of dollars and, and they feel like they shouldn't have to pay it, then we need to see what happened. That's all I was saying.
Okay. I appreciate that.
So if she feel, he or she feel like that is, they was done wrong by the city, then please tell them to follow the proper procedures.
And who do they need to contact? Because they, they, yes, they're most definitely willing to speak with the chief. They're willing to speak.
Well, if they send an email, you can put my name on it, Mr. Cagle, Chief Lopez, and we'll look into it.
And by the way.
Have her, have her to file the complaint.
I understand. I talked to the chief about it. I sent him the information, the case.
We don't have it. You're bringing it before the council and I sympathize with her.
I understand.
But an email that you sent to chief, you can forward that to me and Mr. Cagle.
I understand.
Would you please?
I'll let them know. Thank you.
Mr. Sean Price. Good evening. You have four minutes.
Good evening, City Council. I'm just going to take a brief moment to make notice of the Palestinian hostages, right? So just a brief moment of silence for those that have been terrorized by Hamas terrorists So I'd like to bring to your attention tonight's total cost of 24-086, 24-087, 24-089, 24-90, and so forth. So when you add them all up, we got $2,070,006 on top of the $282 million and the projected $105 million combined city hall costs of total debt. And I realize that our city manager will misnombrature our debt as a city, right? Realize that it's over 20 years and so forth and so forth and so forth. That's understood, but it's still the city's debt. We are $282 million in debt. It is on the website for the city, so it's not like it's not known by the city council or its staff. So at spending $620,000 for software, I think we can find cheaper software. It's software. I don't think that there's any software out there that costs $620,000 for three years. Underneath this solar project for the regional airport at $99,000, I'm just wondering what the added hazmat replacement and recycling costs for those panels will be in three to six years, because that's the normal replacement time for those panels, unless if you have the new hyper hybrid ones. For the, the charging stations, right? Are we going to put the warning signs out for cyanide gas if fire is present? Because these vehicles emit cyanide gas. When batteries catch on fire and burn, if they're made out of lithium ion or nickel cadmium, they emit cyanide gas, which is extremely deadly. All you have to do is get a big old puff of wind and you're dead. So I'm just wondering, you know, there's a lot of bus stations all over the world that are killing people with cyanide gas and nobody's paying attention to these, to this battery situation. Not only that, you know, the hazmat involvement of having the fire department with the necessary apparatus to go in to extinguish these, these fires. Thank you for your time.
That completes our public hearing. I mean, our citizen comments. We will now go into our consent agenda. Madam Secretary.
MN 24011, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of April 23, 2024. RS 24086, consider memorandum resolution for renewal of software maintenance and high availability services of Navaline software provided by Central Square for three years in an amount of $620,123. RS 24087, consider a memorandum resolution approving a professional services agreement with Garver LLC for construction administration services for the airport terminal program solar project at Colleen Regional Airport in the amount of $99,600. RS 24089, consider a memorandum resolution for a by-board cooperative agreement with Heartland Parks and Recreation LLC for the final design and construction of sidewalks and trails within and around Condor, Phyllis, Long Branch West, and Stewart Parks in an amount not to exceed $1,172,771. RS 24090, consider a memorandum resolution to replace the pool house at Long Branch Park through Palomar Modular Buildings by-board cooperative contract number 732-24 in the amount of $277,717. RS 24091, consider a memorandum resolution to enter into an inter, an interlocal agreement with Bell County for an electric charging station.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Councilmember Adams?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Solomon?
Second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready, resolutions.
RS 24088, consider a memorandum resolution declaring a vacancy on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and appointing a member to fill the unexpired term.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, our assistant city manager went through the slides last week. Would you like for her to go back through them? Okay, Councilmember Solomon, did you select a person?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Michael Lawson.
Can you please put that in the motion?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we would select Michael Lawson.
Councilmember for Parks and Recreation?
For Parks and Recreation.
Advisory Board.
Advisory Board.
Councilmember Adams?
Madam Mayor, second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready, public hearing.
PH 24015, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Raquel Galman and Michael Hampton, case number Z2320, to rezone approximately 36.03 acres out of the WH Coal Survey, abstract number 205, 5-1-1, 5-2, and 6, from A agricultural district, A-R1 agricultural single-family residential district, and B3 local business district to a PUD planned unit development with B3 local business district uses. The properties are locally addressed as 9888 and 10,004 Tremere Road, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Colleen by amending the zoning of approximately 36.03 acres out of the WH Coal Survey, abstract number 205, 5-1-1, 5-2, and 6, from A agricultural district, A-R1 agricultural single-family residential district, and B3 local business district to a PUD planned unit development with B3 local business district uses, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, Mr. Rebell went through the slides last week. Would you like for him to go back through it again? With that being said, would the applicant like to speak? Good evening, sir. I'm sorry, Councilmember Alvarez, did you have anything you want to say? I apologize, sir.
No, ma'am. I just had it on to make a motion.
Okay. Well, once we go through the public hearing, I will call on you first.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, sir.
City Manager, I think once again, I'd like to thank you for your service and sacrifice to keep the city of Colleen moving forward. I'd also like to thank everyone for their heartfelt words for today and also last week during the working group and support of this proposal. I had a, something written out for me to say, but I think I prefer to talk from the heart and things that I've seen to come through, to fruition in our effort for this proposal. In reflection, on Saturday, Raquel and I went to the city cemetery with our sons. And when we were there, I was, I was in awe of who was there, because it was the community that came out. We had our elders there and we had our children there, some of the children, you know, still in their strollers. However, everyone was there to support and help. That to us is community. That to us is what the city is about. I really enjoy the diversity of the city. I know that culturally, we're diverse. We're one of the most diverse cities in the country. I think that's what we, as a community, love about Colleen and the surrounding communities. Like I said, the elders were there, some of them still in wheelchairs, but they were still putting out flags. All right? That's important and that's our proposal. That's the kind of place that we are trying to create, because all ethnicities, all ethnicities were out there and to me, that is the backbone of this community, just the diversity of the culture in which we live. The elders that have taken care of this city and they have taken care of us for all these years, and now it's time to provide them a place for them to relax and have fun. Our children will take care of us and they will take care of the city one day. And it's time for us to provide them a place to learn and grow. But today, it's our turn. We have to step up and provide a place for them to learn, grow, and play, a place of peace and space and just, just growth, both intellectually and athletically. We have the capability to do it. And when I say us, me and Raquel just happened to spearhead this, but this is about community. This is about bringing everyone together to build this thing together. You know, yes, we can say that this is a beacon. I think this city is a beacon and this is just another small part of it, but something that can illuminate what we always know that we have to offer within the city itself. I will say that this, though, that we cannot I will say that this, though, that we cannot and have not done this in a vacuum. I know that it takes a lot of effort to get anything like this done. And that is not on me, Raquel, the community, but this is about the city, the city and the staff. I will tell you that I know that when I go in the morning after a storm and there's a tree laying down on the road, when I come home, that tree's gone. Or a water main is busted. When I come back to home, I hit my tap and it works. That doesn't happen by magic. There's individuals working tirelessly every day to keep this city running and functioning. Most of them receive very little accolades, very little recognitions for their hard effort and work. And I think that we need to change that. You've given me a platform here today just for a few minutes, so I'm going to take that platform to utilize that. So I'd like to thank the city manager and his office for their efforts, the Planning and Zoning Commission for your efforts to keep this thing growing. It is a daunting task, absolute daunting task to maintain a city and keep it moving. The Department, Services Department or Development, that would be Mr. Revel.
Revel.
Revel, sorry. And Michelle, I mean, sorry, Wallace, Ms. Wallace. I'm sorry, Ms. Meischer. And then we got Jerry Mallard out of Planning and Joanne Mathis also with support. But I will tell you that we need to thank all the city workers, all the city workers, every day. Every day. And when you see a city worker, a policeman, a fireman, sanitation, Public Works, when you see them, thank them. Thank them. Because they deserve it. They absolutely deserve it. And from this right here, I thank you on behalf of us all. We thank you. We thank you. We thank you.
Thank you very much. Miss, there will be no talking in the chamber, Mr. Jones. That's your first one. We will now have our public hearing. Public hearing is open. Mister, if I mispronounced your name, Theron and Savannah Gibson. Good evening, you have four minutes.
Greetings, Madam Mayor, City Manager, and City Council Members. My name is Savannah Gibson and this is my son, Theron Gibson.
Theron, okay.
We live at 1220 Hummingbird Road. I stand in agreement with my son and other members of the Prairie View Estates Community to express support of the Three Gems Project. Initially, I was against this project, but after careful consideration, and as my son stated, it was just due to fear and just not understanding the plan. What I've learned from my son regarding this project is fear has two meanings. One is forget everything and run, or face everything and rise. And as a city, that's what we try to do. After tour of the property, I became open enough to see the opportunities and the visions Raquel and Mike has for this project. So I was wrong and I love the fact that I can just admit that. This project is impressive, professional, and in a controlled environment and with so many fun options for our youth. Educating us on the project plans was thoughtful and respectful. This project will impact the community by providing our youth with participation skills. And there's another community, it looks almost like a city within our big city. It's coming right across from us, like 4,000 homes. So that we know there are going to be a lot of children. And what the Three Gems Project is going to do is kind of help us deter mischief. I hate to say that, but we got to just face it that, that that can happen. But it'd be so, so many options for them at the Three Gems Project that maybe that won't happen. It's walking distance for them. I mean, less than a mile. Where the Lions Park, they probably not want to walk that, that far, especially if it's hot. So I also believe if problems arise with this project, the Three Gems, the owners, they're very communicators and easy to talk to. So Raquel and Mike, I know you would do well if this gets approved. And remember, take care of your reputation because it's going to live longer than you. Thank you so much.
Well spoken. Mister Russell, good evening, you have four minutes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, Secretary, and everybody else. Again, I stand with the changing to the PUD with B3. Again, like I stated before, you know, make your decision with the end in mind, especially when the airport is going to, airport is going to grow. And I think with Three Gems, they're going to grow in unison. Because when you increase the amount of flights coming out of the airport, then you increase the amount of opportunity for the airport to receive more grant money. So again, whatever decision is made tonight, think about, again, the end in mind. When the, when the youth teams fly in or drive in, of course, they're hot. And also with the flight, it's just going to, it's just going to work itself out and pay itself off. For Mike and Raquel, I definitely appreciate you bringing this to this area because before this building was here, I'm sure someone had to make a decision. Before a lot of these buildings were down here, someone had to make a decision. There had to be a vote. There had to be something. So what you're doing right now is what's new for years to come. So from myself to you, I appreciate you. Especially as a visionary, a lot of times visionary, they don't really get poured into. So I pour back in you today. Because I know that as a visionary, there is so much that happens that people don't see. So I understand what you see. Because a vision is something that's planted, but it, once it cracks the ground, then it becomes visible. So as you plant this seed right now, it's going to be visible for us to see, especially when the youth come and the buses come in and things like that. The restaurants are going to have more patrons. And when you bring more food truck parks and homes and stuff like that, it's just going to make it a destination. Colleen has its own destinations, but it's in spurts, Wednesdays, Tuesdays. Having Three Gems will be a new destination in this area. And again, we are all of age to where we're going to have our grandkids that's going to be looking for things to do. And this right here will allow them to do not just more, but it's able to bring more into the city. So again, make your decision with the end in mind. Thank you.
Public hearing is closed. I would like to thank the council, the individuals that had the opportunity to go out and view the site and make your decision based on that. Last week, you gave reasons why you are in support of it. And I didn't speak last week because I wanted your perspective, but I had the opportunity to meet with both of them when this was in the planning phase. And we called Mister Russell on the phone, Mister Ronnie Russell on the phone, because they had a similar idea, another group that was coming from Dallas. And I like it when different mindsets, as Mister Russell said, I like the mindsets when you all agree, like, we don't need two, but we can have one. And this project was so far in advance. And one of the things, I know this council is for, is our youth of tomorrow, but also for our youth today. So this was a no-brainer for this particular, our council. They just wanted to go out and see it because we need more activities for our youth. So I thank you, council, for having that vision and just following our 2040 comprehensive plan and making the youth one of your top priorities. With that being said, Mister Cagle, Mister Revel, your staff, you would be young to assist with this and I thank you. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mayor. With that, I'd make, I would move to approve PH 24-015 as presented.
Thank you. It was Councilwoman Gonzalez, Mayor Protem, but now it's Councilmember Segarra. I know you were next, but something happened here. So Councilmember Segarra, she will accept it. But, okay, Mayor Protem, y'all can do it together.
Thank you, Madam. I second that motion, thank you.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Alvarez, second by Mayor Protem Gonzalez. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH 24016, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Melba Imson, case number Z 2408, to rezone approximately two acres out of the JE Madera survey abstract number 600, 10-5, from R1 Single Family Residential District and R3 Multi-Family Residential District to B3 Local Business District. The subject property is generally located southeast of the intersection of West Stan Schlotter Loop and Clear Creek Road, State Highway 201, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of approximately two acres out of the JE Madera survey abstract number 600, 10-5, locally addressed as 4810 Clear Creek Road from R1 Single Family Residential District and R3 Multi-Family Residential District to B3 Local Business District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, Mister Revel went over the slides last week. Would you like for them to go back over them now? Okay, with that being said, we will have a public hearing. Public hearing is open. I'm sorry, public hearing closed. Would the applicant like to speak? All right. Public hearing open. Public hearing closed. Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve PH 24-016 as presented and recommended by PNZ.
Mayor, Councilwoman call.
I second that motion.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Whenever you're ready, Madam Secretary.
PH 24017, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance amending the corporate limits of the City of Colleen, Bell County, Texas, DA 2402, by disannexing approximately 11.980 acres out of the WH Bruce survey abstract number 1296, being locally addressed as 13451 FM 2484, Salado, Texas, declaring said land to no longer be part of the City of Colleen. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the corporate limits of the City of Colleen, Texas, to disannex approximately 11.98 acres out of the WH Bruce survey abstract 1296, being generally located on the south side of FM 2484, west of the intersection with Tres Jack Road, declaring said land to no longer be part of said city, declaring said land and present and future inhabitants of said land to not be entitled to any of the rights and privileges of citizens of the city and to not be bound by the acts and ordinances of the city, providing for a severability clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for a savings clause, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, Mister Revel went through the slides last week. Would you like for him to go back through them? Is the applicant here? Public hearing open, Mister Sean Price. You have four minutes.
Again, City Council. So on this, if you go to the slides and you see the slides, there were more than just, I think there was about nine to 11 properties actually out there. And this is the second one that's asked in this area to be removed. I don't know if it was Councilmember Adams or Mister Alvarez that brought up the thing that we might want to just go ahead and remove everybody since all these people that are in this general location right there, they're not being given cities services, but they're paying into the tax dollars, but not receiving any of the benefits from the city for that. So it might be beneficial to everybody in this local area. Just go ahead and release them, remove ourselves from, from that location and allow them to just keep what they had prior to us taking them, which was Salado. Give it back to Salado since that's the, that's the area that's providing the services anyway, essentially, until we took over and then we can't provide it. So I'm just saying, it was an overextension by the city. We should learn how to draw back, pull back our hand, and let it, let things be the way that they should have been in the beginning. Thank you.
Public hearing closed. And each individual that lives in that area, they would have to petition the city as an individual. And when that was expanded in that area, this council was not a part of it. It was way before our time, even the city manager. With that being said, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't need to repeat what you just said. But, I mean, this one is a no-brainer, as we already said. There was no Salado also at the time. Salado was a place and didn't reach up this far, just for the, so everyone is aware. But if it's not too soon, I would like to move to approve the disannexation in PH 24-017.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Mayor, I'll second that motion.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. We will now have discussion items, our last item. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready. Thank you.
DS 24035, municipal court briefing.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Good evening, Judge Krishna. I hope you heard there were a question that was asked about a warrant. So before you leave the podium, would you please ask, talk to us about that process after you finish or whenever you want to.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, I did not hear the question.
The, the process of how a warrant gets signed.
Okay, well, there are different kinds of warrants. There are arrest warrants and what's called capious profile warrants. So it all depends on what kind of warrant it is.
It was about a dog. I mean, not like that. I guess it was a dog that was out and a warrant was issued to go get the dog. I'm not sure. We don't know the whole story, but there was a question about.
Oh, that makes sense then. It happens all the time, actually. So what would happen usually is an animal services officer would come to me with a, with an affidavit, with a probable cause affidavit as to why they want a warrant to seize the dog. So that's be probable cause to seize the dog. So if I view the affidavit, I find there is probable cause, I sign the warrant so the animal services can go and seize the dog. It's really that simple.
Thank you. Oh, you can start your briefing.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council, City Manager. Okay, so this is the first, let me go here. This is the first new briefing for the six-month period. So I'll go back through October through, I'm sorry, from March of this year, from October last year to March of this year. I have some court updates. And first update is we have some new administrators. We have a new head administrator, a new assistant administrator. The new court administrator, Sandra Rodriguez, she has 20 years municipal court experience. And she has a lot of experience. She has a good, she has a master's degree, so she's educated. And she's been with the court previously for several years. She left, went somewhere else, retired, came back a few years ago. So she's been with us for a while. So she has a lot of experience to be an administrator. Now also, we have some updates from the last six months to help things be more efficient with the court process. Things like the text message notification system to defendants. Because before, we had a problem with defendants coming to court for their, for their, for their cases. So now, instead of sending them emails or sending them mail, we actually send them text messages. Because as you know nowadays, everyone has their cell phone and everyone receives text messages. So even if they don't want to open it, you know, they will because So even if they don't want to open it, you know, they will because of the text message. So a lot more people have been coming to court as a result of this. And we have other systems, too, that we've put in place to make things more efficient for people, like the updated credit card system and the website payment plan and other things as well. So we're trying to move it along to make things more efficient. Obviously, we just started this this year, so we're still in the process of seeing how this goes. We're trying to make things more efficient. That's the whole goal. Now also, we want to talk about the number of defendants who came to court in the last several months, and just to show you how things have been going. Now in October, we've had a lot of people come into the lobby area to take care of their cases. Some people were set for court dockets. And other people who were set, only about a quarter of people came in October to actually show up. And that's before we implemented the system with the text messages. We started that back in, I think, January. So things changed a lot in January. So right here, we have about a quarter of the people who actually showed up for their dockets in court. In November, excuse me, November was about the same. It's about a quarter in November as well. In December, it was a little different. December is, you know, with the holiday and everything, it's a little different. So we didn't have enough people, we didn't have a lot of people set for the dockets. But all the people set, we have about half come in, which was good. But we didn't have a lot of people set, so take that for what it's worth. Now in January, when we started doing the text messages, we had about a third of the people come in. So it increased from a quarter to a third, which is really good. And it stayed that way consistently for the next few months. So January's about a third. Excuse me, February is about a third. I'm sorry, actually, February is a little better than a third. It's a little less than half. It's about 42% for February. And then in March, it was back to about a third. So it kind of stabilized at about a third. So in the next six-month briefing, we'll see how this progresses. So we're hoping to have more people actually show up for their dockets. We'll see how that goes. Now next, we have the metrics that we usually use to find out how our performance is. Now, the clearance rate is like the first thing we measure. Now, this is just talk about the disposition of cases. Now, if the cases are not disposed of in a timely manner, then we'll have a backlog of cases, which is how we've been for several years. We had a big backlog of cases. So we won't know the cases that are backlog without checking the clearance rates. Now, so what we aspire to do is have at least 100% disposal rate to clear the cases out. That's our goal, to have at least 100%. Obviously, it's aspirational, but that's what we're trying to do. So as you can see, in the last several months, we started off pretty poorly at 72%. We've had some months that were really good, some that were over 100%, which is our goal. But, you know, it wasn't consistent. We had a couple months that were lower. But we're trying to do at least 100% each month. That's the standard. That's what we're trying to reach. So we're getting better, but we're not there yet. Okay, next, we have the age of pending caseload. Now with the age of pending caseload, now this is the inventory of cases that we have that show how long they've been there. And the problem we've had is, we have cases for a long time because we have this backlog. So our age of pending caseload is not very good. So you look at the metrics there for this 1 to 60-day cases, they're very poor, you know, under 5% for all of them. And the one thing we have about these cases here in Colleen is, I guess, because of the population, a lot of people cannot pay their fines and costs and clear their cases within 30 days. Because most people have the option of paying within, the same day, within 30 days, being put on a payment plan. And by far, the majority of people are either on a payment plan or not able to pay at all, so they get community service. So they can't pay everything off within 30 days, usually. So that's why 30 days usually looks so bad. And a lot of times, people have so many cases, they have to be put on a payment plan to extend their cases out for months. And a lot of times, just because citations are not cheap. Some citations can be as much as over $300, some can be up to $2, $4,000. So it could be a lot of money. So if they have to make payments, a lot of people cannot make payments of $3, $4 a month. So the payments on the payment plan are usually somewhere between $50 to $200, usually. That's usually. And if they're successful, great, but they might take a few months to pay that off. So it makes our pending caseload go back a lot of days. Now, it shouldn't be as bad as it is now, but we do have the backlog of cases. That's why the percent of pending cases that are older, or longer than 180 days, is so high. Because a lot of our cases are more than 180 days, but that's not where we want to be. We want to get them lower than 180 days at least. But we have a significant backlog that we're still trying to handle. And I have no estimate as when that's going to be fixed. It's going to be quite a while until it's fixed, just so you know. Now, this one's a lot easier. This is a time date certainty. This talks about the cases that are set for trial. And one thing I can say, in our court, we have probably less than 1% of cases that go to trial yearly. We don't have a lot of trials. And that's because if people want to go to trial, that's their right. But if they work out a deal with the prosecutor, with the city's attorney, then the trials get, the cases get disposed of without going to trial. That's what happens more than 99.99% of the time. But this year, we, the last six months, we had one trial go to, one case go to trial. The case was disposed of at trial, and that was in March. But that was the only one. And speaking of that, we had a trial set today that actually didn't go because we had some issues, but it didn't go. The defendant didn't actually show up. So that happens sometimes as well. But that case will be reset for another date. But the cases, they get disposed of, but mostly not with trials, just so you know. Okay, so to recap, we talked about some updates that we had in the last six months. We talked about the number of defendants who come in by, we talked about the percentages and how things are improving. And we also talked about the metrics used for the way we can look at our data to see how we can improve things. And that is everything. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Bullitt.
I just want to point out that you've been true to your word in terms of creating and establishing efficiencies within the court. And as we continue to get updates, we're seeing that that's being accomplished. So again, thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Judge Krishner, is there any more, any support you need from us? Anything else that we can do to assist? Because I know it's just the caseload, you have no control over that. COVID had played a big deal in that, setting everything back. And then people not paying, they fine. I mean, I don't know what else you can do about that. But is it any way we, the council, can help you?
Well, Madam Mayor, I think the biggest help we can get, really, is not in your control, really. It's something that is being proposed in the future. That's a new courthouse. Because our courthouse is just too small. Our capacity is not where we need it to be. The city is growing so much. We only have one courtroom. We need two. We don't have the capacity for people. These courts, we have dockets every single day now. And even though we have these dockets, we don't have time to do the paperwork afterwards because we have so many people come into court, at least scheduled for court, every single day. Our staff, who actually has to do the paperwork and everything else, they don't really have the time to do everything else because it's just like, we have to sit them in there, defendants in the courtroom, every single day. So it's like, it's not helping our backlog. But it's not anything you guys can do about it just now because I know in the future, we're trying to get a new courthouse. Until that happens, we might be in this kind of position for a while. There's not really much you can do about that, but that's kind of where we are.
Yeah, so are you fully staffed right now?
We actually are. Actually, we're short two people, but we just, we're in the process of hiring two people. So we'll be fully staffed after they come on board.
And what two positions are you hiring for now?
One is deputy city marshal. The other one is compliance specialist. So compliance specialist, they deal with the warrants. They deal with the same people in the dockets for people don't show up for court. They come up for the failure to appear. That's a special dock for people don't come to court. And that's compliance specialist. And deputy city marshal, well, that's court security and actually going out there serving warrants. So that's happened, you know. Deputy city marshal's been there with us for several years. He decided to move on to KISD, so he's no longer with us. The compliance specialist got promoted.
Okay, well, thank you. And I plan on visiting the court soon.
I appreciate that, Madam Mayor. And I'd like to open that invitation to all the councilmembers that come to the court and check us out. We'd love to have you there.
Yes, sir. We have one more question. Councilmember Segarra.
Thank you, Mayor. And the comment you made about the courthouse, that was very interesting. You know, it really did not occur as we, as council and leadership, plan for the future. You know, from my perspective, it didn't occur to me, you know, how we're growing as a city, but you're right, you know, the courthouse, you know. I don't know if that means a second judge, too, a different judge. And so we got to look at all and the staff that comes along with that. So that's something that really is something to think about here in the future as we plan, you know, and budget and do all that. Because you're right, I mean, that is an important part of our city, the courthouse. And we got to make sure that we are efficient. I like the way that you keep track of the data. And, you know, the saying, you know, what gets measured gets done. And, you know, by measuring what's happening and you keep track of those numbers, we can make those necessary adjustments. And I think that looking at it from a huge perspective, up high, you know. And a lot of times, you know, I know that you work on the court, you work in the court. But I think what that data does is it gives you like that opportunity, not just to be the judge working inside the court, but the judge that's working on the court, you know, on everything that's happening. And that's also a saying in business, you know. We don't all want to be the cooks, you know. It's hard because then you can't make the planning to see how your business is running. And so that's the balancing that you have to do where you're at. And, you know, I truly appreciate you bringing that forward because I think that definitely something that we got to look at. So thank you, Judge.
I really appreciate that. Thank you. But that's why I have to really rely on my administrators because, you know, they do a lot of work with the data and trying to figure out what we actually need to do to improve. I really appreciate having them to help me with that. I can take the credit, but I really shouldn't. It's really them who's really helping me a lot with that.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Alvarez.
So moved, Mayor.
Okay, so I guess Councilmember Solomon made the motion, and Councilmember Alvarez seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Me and adjourn.